Yes.
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 Okay, along with the regular agenda discussion, okay, we're gonna exempt this property because no one's there, right?
Well, no one's there, and it is owned by the city of Aurora. I believe they just bought it. They have no intention of remitting or doing anything with it. So normally when we do municipalities, counties, villages, or whatever, we exempt, or we don't charge recycling fees for any of their properties. So I've included the email change.
Yeah.
Parcel information from the auditor's office as backup as to why we're doing this.
Okay.
Which saves me a drive from here by.
Exited journal entry.
Yeah, so I'll have to add. I'll make a motion to add a journal entry to exempt four eight seven North Pelican Road, Aurora, from the recycling fees that is owned by the city of Aurora.
And I'll follow up with an email letting them know that it's going to be exempt.
We need a second, two seconds.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Role calling, Sabrina.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
Becky.
Yes.
Okay, item B, it's CDL truck driver job description and job posting. Working with Janet, we revised the current CDL posting. And there's just a few changes to reflect what we're doing. If you go to skills and knowledge, you'll see the very last sentence, operating trucks over thirty thousand, that is now replaced with twenty six thousand. Same way with critical skills slash expertise and job standards as well, the weight difference. And we changed the Ohio A to B. There's that one. And then we have draft resolution, same thing, to amend that job description for next week, same thing. In the job standards and the italic size is the old, and we will make the changes where it will reflect that this will be a B, operating a truck over twenty six thousand pounds. And then the following one is, we'll bring back next week as well, a new resolution to approve the posting repost for CDL truck driver records, solid waste sector, changes made accordingly.
Okay, and then that is going to be posted?
Yeah, well, we'll bring it, well.
If it's approved next Thursday on Friday?
Right.
And then how long is the posting period?
Our time track requir- our labor time track requires ten days.
Okay, so ten days.
Yeah, so, and with that, I forgot to put on my discussion portion that I will be out of the office next Thursday. So, you know, I will roll this all over to the consent agenda.
Okay.
And, you know, if you have any questions, I will be available via cell phone. I'll be touring water, wastewater plants, so be generous, it'll be my life next Thursday.
I thought you'd wait until, you know, go tour, I was with you toured last year, and I wasn't able to make it, but waste management.
Yeah, the processing facility, yeah, this is a former, class four wastewater plant, I had to keep my contact out.
You have to keep your contacts.
Yeah, and then this makes it wash for the rest of the year.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Role calling.
Kathleen.
Yeah.
Sabrina.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll review the, we'll review the motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
You're welcome, have a good day, everybody.
You too.
All right.
Thank you.
Is Brad here?
Yeah.
No.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, go ahead and prove it.
You can give us name, if you can, or something.
When we come. Uh, we'll go into person consent agenda.
I have some questions.
Oh, sure. Joanne's not here. Oh, that's right, isn't?
Oh, she was there.
Yeah, is she?
Todd, you know Joanne?
She is here, and I know she's coming up, but.
Oh, yeah, she's.
Okay, we should wait over those until later anyways.
That's fine.
Okay.
One, one issue I had on the consent that's not Joanne's. Um, can you hand me? I'd like to pull item twenty from the consent agenda.
Resolution twenty?
Yeah. I think we need to do a, do some checking into this. It's the appointment to the district library board.
Okay.
The person is an employee of one of the district libraries applying to be on the board of the library. So I, I think we should pull that off. I don't know if that's allowed.
Conflict or not, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that might be a problem, so let's just pull it and we'll look into it and.
Yeah, 'cause it looks like the director pointed that out to her, but she wants to continue anyways.
Yeah, I think we should talk to the director, perhaps do a conflict check. Um, she is a part-time employee, it looks like, or maybe even.
As a substitute.
Right, and I don't know exactly what that means, so let's just pull that for today, and we can come back to it once we've done some checking. Yeah, so move to pull item twenty from the consent agenda.
This is on Joanne's, which you may know is an acronym, O P O T A, what is that, Ohio Portage, what, or, do you know?
No, after talking to the other.
It's a license agreement between the board and O P O T A Ridgefield, or is that just a place?
Is that what?
It's a law enforcement, is it that?
It's a law enforcement acronym of some kind, but we'll fill out.
Okay, okay. All right.
I just didn't know what it was.
What is it?
Oh.
I'm guessing peace officer.
All right.
Peace officer.
Yeah, I think it's Ohio Police Officer Training.
Okay, association.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, now. I have a couple of questions for her too, so.
So she'll be up at ten?
Yeah, she's coming, she's got a whole list for us.
There you go. So Brad should be up shortly, other than.
Yeah, let me, let me just point out one other item on the consent agenda, just in case, just to make everyone aware. Item nineteen is a resolution thanking Governor DeWine and the Ohio House of Representatives for.
Right, indigent.
The passage of the indigent defense funding, which the way Governor DeWine did a pretty major allocation of funding to try to get counties closer to whole for their reimbursement.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
That's been a huge expense for counties out of the general revenue fund.
Mm-hmm.
The House actually increased it to a hundred percent funding.
Mm-hmm.
I have talked to Todd about this, and it sounds like Porish County has done a good job of getting the reimbursement amount. Some counties were in the low twenties.
Right.
We were in the low forties.
In the forties, yeah.
But still getting a hundred percent, which could mean over a million dollars additional in state funds for the, for the G R F.
As much. Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
So this resolution is a thank you to Governor DeWine and to the House, and an encouragement to Senator Eklund and the Ohio Senate to do that funding, yes, to follow with what the bipartisan House and Republican Governor has recommended.
Coming on.
Yes.
So, um, just to, just to flag that for everyone, I think that's a good move to give that our support.
Right, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I was very happy to see that, and I think C C A O was very instrumental in pushing that.
They were, yeah, they were. And I was a little skeptical when I first, 'cause I just thought, I've seen this debate go on for years, and it's fallen on deaf ears. And C C A O made it their number one priority, and they have really done a good job with it, so.
Succeeding. Right, yep.
I think it's potentially good news, and hopefully we can get it across the finish line.
Amy, did you call?
They're calling.
Okay. It's Ace's birthday, by the way.
I know.
Let's see, here, treasures.
I have a couple of questions on that before he comes up, but. I don't recall us ever doing a resolution for potential donations. You know, we always do resolutions, like for the dog warden, Johnson Family Services, that state and list everyone individually.
Which one are you talking?
I'm working, talking to Brad's, his resolution B, acceptance of donations.
Okay. Is it?
I don't remember us ever doing a resolution.
Oh, the residential, well, you know, you, I don't know about a resolution, but I know I've donated books and things in the past ones. I don't remember a resolution, but.
Well, but, but what this is, is just a resolution saying he's allowed to accept donations of not to exceed three thousand. I just don't remember us ever passing a resolution with a cap. Normally, people donate and they pass the resolution, like the dog warden, this states the person's name, address, and the value or the monetary amount. It is my question.
Generally, we do it after the fact, after the donation's received, and it identifies the donation.
Exactly.
Can we do one for the chair, first flowers?
We do that after the fact, after.
After.
After he does a.
So you think this is premature, maybe?
Yes, I do, but.
I don't know that it, that we can't do it, but I think the follow-up one still is important that you, because it acknowledges the actual people that gave. And the amounts, do you remember the courthouse when someone wanted to donate those flower pots?
Yeah.
And we had to get a dollar amount for it, we weren't allowed to just accept flower pot, you know?
Right, right.
But it's always been after and acknowledged the exact person, the exact amount for the use.
Right.
Whereas this one's just saying he's going to get them, so I don't know that you can't do it, but I don't know that you need to do this one, I think you still need the one after.
And he's like a cap on it. Yeah, I, do you ever remember when, I mean, it's a little premature, but I don't know if it's anything. And then when he gets here, I also have questions regarding his resolution about the acceptance of payments by financial transaction devices. It, it says here that the payer shall pay all the fees and services due to the entity, like the merchant services facilitating the transaction, and that we also are giving the caveat that the departments may charge an additional fee of up to three percent on top of that.
Convenience fee. Yeah, I think that was the start, the clerk of courts was doing that, we talked about that before. May charges surcharge, huh?
But, you know, like solid, or not solid waste, which County Water Resources, they normally eat the fee. They don't pass it on to the customer, because when it's through them, they get a lesser percentage of the fee, and they're just glad to get the payments. And then, that's why I wanted to ask Brad, who, who in the county is charging the transaction fee above and beyond what the merchant services charges?
No, I, I just had a question for Brad, but I can wait till he gets here.
Yeah, me too.
Excuse me, might I ask a quick question?
Yes. Sure.
Since executive sessions regarding whatever they cover are inherently non-public, would it be possible to have all your executive sessions at one time on a day when there's not, not during a public meeting?
Well, a lot of times directors come in.
Yeah, different times.
But I mean, any particular time I'm sure is inconvenient for them as any other particular time. And if they just came in, say, on a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday morning, or some afternoon.
An executive session has to take place during a regular special meeting, so that's one aspect they have to.
Why does it have to be during a regular public meeting then? Couldn't they be during a regular non-public meeting?
We don't have a.
We don't have any non-public meetings.
Mm-mm.
All meetings are open unless a law, specifically a law, or an exception into executive session.
Because all the commissioners are present.
Correct, okay.
It becomes a public meeting.
Or a court.
Okay, I guess I'll think about some.
Happy birthday, Brad.
Yes.
Thanks, another day old.
Another day old.
Very exciting.
Another day older, and you're getting slower.
Didn't think you were that old, Brad.
He looks twelve, doesn't he?
Yes, he does.
That's twelve.
Still gets card.
Seventy-four one of these days.
You, and it won't be long, you know, it won't be long.
'Cause I wake up one day, and there will be, yeah. All right, y'all, thank you for taking some time to talk with me this morning, so I have two resolutions that I am proposing this morning. I want you to tackle first.
We have the authorizing acceptance of payments listed first.
Okay, let's do that one then. Um, so as you know, we've been having conversations about credit cards and exploring a process for everybody in the county to have the option to take payment for an amount owing to the county via credit card, debit card, and other electronic devices. This is a resolution that I worked up in conjunction with prosecutor's office that gets at, at that ability. And it mirrors some that we've done for other offices that have done this individually. This just kind of expands out who can do it. So that first resolved covers all of the offices that are able under O R C three oh one twenty-eight to take payments that have that option, and basically it's everybody. Um, the exception to that would be the boards and other county government entities that are not covered there. We, because individual boards kind of have their own statutory ecosystem in which they exist, rather than spell all of that out in there, this is supposed to be a catch-all provision that says if the code allows you to take payment, you can also come in under this program, so.
That was my question.
That's what that second resolve is about, it's a creative way for those people to come in without spelling it out specifically. So if they have authorization, they can of course do this too.
Yeah, 'cause I was surprised to see the Park District in there.
Uh, yeah, well, they're, they're specifically set out in that piece of the O R C, so they're, they're there. And I haven't had that conversation with Chris, again, the idea is just to sort of.
Yeah, make a broad brush there.
Make it an option for people if they want to do it, so.
Okay, so you haven't actually talked to the Park District yet?
They were, they were on the shotgun, y'all come message I sent out, basically saying if you're interested, let me know, I haven't heard back from her. Um, but again, this opens the door, if at some point in the future she wanted to come on, she could do so, so.
And I have another question, Brad, on the front, with the second revol- resolved from the bottom, about charging an additional surcharge or convenience fee on top of what service charges the merchant services charges?
Yeah, I wanted to delete that provision, so the prosecutor made me put it back in, and that is because there's some agey opinions that say that any surcharge that is charged, whether it is by us or by the processor, is considered to be a charge by the county. So that's where that language comes from, that covers also what the merchant is charging.
Well, but doesn't the, the third resolved up from the bottom cover that, that the payer shall pay all fees and service charges due to the entity facilitating the transaction unless specifically informed otherwise? And then the, the one below it is like an additional surcharge that can be applied?
I think that's a rational way to read that, and again, that's why I wanted to delete that section.
Yeah.
But I, I have been informed that that needs to stay. Um, I think it's a practical matter, we would not be having people charging over and above a amount. So the three percent would be the ceiling people would be charged. I'd want to be pretty clear about that with anybody who's doing it, that that's at least the expectation.
So the three percent is that in addition to?
It should not be.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and that, that's an expectation setting thing that I think we can do in-house, but I was told I have to keep that provision there.
Yeah, because.
Can it be worded?
Differently.
Between the two, not to exceed three percent?
Yeah, something needs changing, 'cause that's not how most reads.
Well, so I think that's what the first clause kind of gets at, so the entity, and that's why I, I added that, he said the entity facilitating the transaction, which is your merchant, or the county office authorizing it may charge not to exceed three percent. So I think if you read those two together, that says the ceiling is three percent.
No, because what you just explained is the entity is not perceived as the one that's charging their fee, it's the county. So it looks to me like the entity could charge a fee, and then the county could charge a fee on top, that's, that's where there's.
So the third resolved from the bottom says, is setting out who is, who's paying the fee, which is the payer, which is the person interacting with us, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, unless it's specifically set out otherwise, and the reason we have that clause is because water services, the water department has a little special thing that Todd does, right, where, where you currently are paying on behalf of the person because it's cheaper in the grant scheme.
Yeah.
So to set out that kind of thing, that's where that last section is at, in that third resolve.
Well, water resources pays it, they don't add it, pass it on.
Right, right, and this, and that's why, so, so I'm clarifying what that third resolve from the bottom is, that's, that's who pays and how they pay. That second resolved then, again, I think you have to read that together, that first clause says entity facilitating the transaction, which is your merchant, or the county may charge a surcharge not to exceed three percent. So it's an either-or provision, but I, I think the not to exceed three percent is, is inclusive.
Well, that's.
Mr. Missouri, would you agree with that, with that interpretation of the language there, or?
Use a financial, not to exceed. Between, I think you need to put something, something else though, Chris, it's, it's not clear.
I'm asking that.
I mean, it sounds like the entity facilitating the transaction or the county office authorizing it may charge a surcharge or convenience fee for the use of financial transaction devices not to exceed three percent. So if the entity facilitating it, as you just said earlier, that even though that's a surcharge to give, goes with them.
It's an and versus or distinction.
Yeah.
It's an and versus or distinction, so if it were and, the county may charge three percent, then it's or.
Yep. Yeah.
I think that, I think that sets our cap at three, Chris, is that?
We can review it if you like.
Yeah, could you please, because it's very confusing, I think, because just what you said, Brad, is even though it's an entity charge, it's perceived, it has to be labeled as a county charge, like for the merchant, is what you said earlier, so.
What they said, not to exceed a total of three percent.
Not to exceed three percent, well.
Not to exceed a total of three percent.
Yeah, well, not to exceed three percent, that means three percent or less, I mean, the max is three, is a cap, so.
Brad, you've already reviewed it with Allison already, if there's any.
In some depth, let me.
Some depth.
Yeah, we've been talking about that a lot, so.
I mean, if there's any.
And there's a couple of agey opinions on it that she provided to me too in the drafting of it, so I think, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with adding a total, the words a total there.
Yeah.
Um, I don't want to delay the process anymore, I'd like to get it in the field if we can, because that's, that timeline is better for everybody.
Todd, would, 'cause I, I asked Todd about this, 'cause it's perceived the same way, that's why I'm asking.
Okay.
What if it does exceed thirty, three percent?
I'm gonna defer to my attorneys on that and the people who have law degrees, so I think. This is, this is interpretation of and versus or in my, in my read of it.
I mean, the best thing to do, if you want to sit down again and discuss all that, if there's any ambiguity at all, it doesn't sound like there is too much, but if, Sabrina, if you have a question.
Yeah.
We can clarify that if you're.
Yeah.
Did the other two of you have a problem with that as it reads presently, or? But we can add a total of, if we, 'cause I think that covers it there, so in that last line of, of that resolved section, not to exceed a total of three percent, does that address your concern?
I don't think that is needed, I mean, I understand the suggestion, but I think three percent, I think it's clearer.
Yeah.
'Cause again, I don't want to delay kind of unnecessarily.
Right.
We've been talking about this a long time.
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily this resolution, uh, this is the first we've seen it, so.
Brad, will you just walk me through the fee process, like, the fee process?
Um, okay, in which respect?
Just how will, I would, I was confused by these sections too, and just.
Sure, yeah, it's a lengthy resolution, I get that.
As a, a new, or as a resident, just reading this, like, how will the fees be processed?
Yeah, yeah. It's a good question, so for, for the ones that we do presently, and I think for most, um, what happens is the fee is charged, so the fee is charged by the merchant at the time of the transaction. Um, so if you've got, if, if you're paying your tax bill with us and you go to pay online with a credit card, they take that fee directly during the transaction. The only transaction that happens with the county is we receive the payment of what's owed to us in taxes. So none of the fee ever comes back through the county, that's taken, you know, at the time of the transaction by the merchant for using their service, and then we receive our payment out of that, so that's how most of those flow.
But wait, let me ask there, so the, the fee is on top of what is owed, or it's taken out of what is owed?
Yeah.
Is it above?
It is, no, it's, it's, that's a good question, so we can't take it out of what's owed to us, because what, the taxes are the taxes, they have to be the number they are.
It's the taxes, it's the fee, yeah.
Um, and that's true with most things, so.
So they pay a little more to pay by credit, for the convenience of the credit card.
For the, for the privilege of using the credit, yeah, for the convenience.
Right, right. And that's there, that's made very clear to the.
Right, and that's, that's what these next sections kind of cover, so it's, it's that a notice is posted by the county notifying the, the payer of the surcharge of fee, regardless of the method, it says what has to be included in that statement, which is that the fee doesn't go to the county. Um, what the total amount is expressed in dollars and cents or a percentage, um, the fact that it's non-refundable, that's all included. And if you come down to my office, we've got a little placard in our window that says that, that's also mirrored on the website. When you go to complete the transaction, there's a little notice that says what that is. Um, it's on the phone system, so when you call and make a payment over the phone, you get a alert at the end of that that says, you know, what the fee is.
And do we predetermine a percent based on the actual contract, or?
Yeah, it's negotiated under the contract.
And, and they pay the actual percent, not a predetermined one percent or two percent? It's whatever it's negotiated.
We are being charged, they get charged.
And it's, and they're not charging us, so what we negotiate, basically, basically we stand in the shoes of the customer in that situation, and we negotiate the rate, the best rate we can get, um, and then that is what they're charging the customer, these entities, for the privilege of managing those transactions for us.
Okay.
Yeah, and so in our case, it's two and a half percent presently, um, I think the lowest I've seen in the state is like two and a quarter-ish. So we'd be somewhere in that ballpark for what we do. Um, it will necessarily vary by business line, um, just because if you have a smaller volume of transactions, you could potentially have a little higher amount. That'll be one of the things that we have to lay out, uh, as we go forward in that for each individual office. And one of the things that makes this a little more complicated than we have traditionally done is, is that wrinkle about what Todd's doing with water, where, where the county is making the payment rather than having the person directly pay it. So that adds a little bit of a wrinkle that's not reflected in a lot of other places.
So there's no fee in the water resources to the client, to the customer?
It's correct, if your water goes a hundred dollars, you pay a hundred dollars out of your account, that's all that comes out of your account.
No, no fee.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we eat the fee?
We pay that fee then separately to the company.
Covered, and it's a lesser fee, because it's coming to the county's benefit versus individuals. So Brad, back to my question, so is there any departments that you know of that are currently charging the facilitation transaction fee and adding an additional county office fee to it?
None that I know of, there may be someone out there who's under an existing contract that predates this process. Um, so this piece of the O R C and this resolution process, the R P process, um, has a grandfather clause in it, so anybody who had an existing agreement prior to nineteen ninety-seven doesn't have to do this, so they can take transactions. There may be an officer too out there in the county that is under a pre-existing thing that predates this piece of code, but everybody else has to flow through this, this deal.
Well, see, maybe that's why.
And again, you know, I, I, I share the, I share, I was concerned about this confusion when I was drafting this because of that language,
Yeah.
but the, the expectation is that it's, it's what we said, it's a not to exceed amount.
Not to.
It's not in an addition to. So the total surcharge is for someone to say.
Maybe we should put, maybe we should just put total there, use of financial transaction devices not to exceed three percent total, 'cause it, it's looking here, just as I read it, the facilitating could chart, a facilitation of the transaction company can charge a fee, and the county, and, and I believe it was brought to my attention that maybe possibly Judge Berger does charge a con- a convenience fee, as well as there's a facilitating. a con- a convenience fee as well as there's a facilitating transaction fee, so that's, that's not considered-
I speak to that, and they don't, they're not really a part of this conversation for what we're doing.
Well, I, yeah, but probate and juvenile court is, is under Judge Berger, my dad.
Yeah, no, this is an opt-in is what I'm saying, what we're doing here.
Okay. But-
So anybody that's, and that's a goo- a good point too, anybody who's got an existing
Mm-hmm.
kind of capacity under a pre-existing resolution, this is not superseding pre-existing agreements.
Okay.
So if you or some prior board had given someone the authority to do something else, that, that still exists.
This doesn't interfere with this, yeah.
Yeah, they can come onto this if they choose to, if it's a better deal, or you know, there's some reason they want to.
Okay. I think the only-
They wanna give people flexibility is the idea.
The only change I would like is, is if you would like put use of financial transaction devices not to exceed three percent total.
Okay.
Because it does allow for a facility transaction fee as well as a county office to add a fee.
Sure, and I have no problem with that as a friendly amendment to the thing at all.
Okay, thank you.
Do I need to send you something else, or Amy, can you fix that one? You got it?
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Okay.
If it does exceed three percent, is the county then paying it?
I mean, it's not going to. I guess it's, that, that'll be contractual, so they can't exceed, I don't understand your question, I guess is what I'm saying. We have a contract that says the fee shall not be more than-
Well, we're now billing Kent Recycling ten dollars a quarter, and it's very possible that the fee of sixty cents, that's six percent.
Ooh, no, it's not six percent.
I'm not, I'm not following your question, Todd.
Sixty cents, no, you're right, it is six percent.
Mm-hmm.
So, like, our water resource bills are a hundred dollars, the fee's a dollar, we're never close.
This is the fee for the transaction itself, not the fee for, does that help answer your question?
What- No, I don't, I've asked mine yet.
I don't know what your sixty cent fee is for.
So, currently recycling, we are going to start building the city of Kent, and they asked it to be quarterly,
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
Which means we're roughly sending out ten dollar bills.
Okay.
So an individual is going to go online and they're going to pay a ten dollar bill.
Mm-hmm.
It is very possible that the fee exceeds thirty cents, because most of the flight charges are around fifty cents.
Not if we negotiate it otherwise.
Okay.
This is, that's a contractual negotiation thing. So.
Would that be considered prior?
And again, this may be a situation where whoever that payer is on the, on the, that bill is getting a better deal.
That might be considered prior.
They're getting a, they're potentially getting a better deal because we have a larger system. Right, so the company may be willing to eat that difference because of, they're making it up some other place. You see what I'm saying? So that, that's kinda the benefit of doing these things collectively rather than individually.
How many, yeah.
We may be able to save people a little bit here or there on that kinda thing.
Is, is there a way to do what the-
I will make a note about that though, Todd, excuse me, so I'll, I'll check on that.
Is there a way to do what Water Resources is doing throughout the county where we are not passing along those fees?
Um, just a second, let me finish this up here.
Well, the thing is though, it could, it's when you're paying your real estate taxes, that would have to be a separate-
Yeah.
Well, you're not allowed to net it, you're not allowed to net.
Yeah, right.
But you can still pay the fee out of general fund, you just can't net it from the amount that was paid to the county.
Right. Do we have any idea how much that would be total, I mean, it would depend on how many departments.
Depend on the number of transactions, yeah, I mean, so we used to do that, that's one of the reasons we stopped doing credit cards for tax bills
Yes. Yeah.
in the nineties is, um, the, the group at that point was paying, the county was paying the freight for credit card transactions, and the fees became prohibitive, I think it was like sixty thousand dollars plus a year, we were spending just on credit card transaction fees. So that stopped, um, that's the reason we kinda hit a pause button through two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, I think, when we revived this. Um, the way that we revived it was by doing the different structure, um, so.
You know, I think a lot of people wanna use their credit cards though because they get other perks.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I had a lot of calls when I was treasurer, that, you know, he was arguing back and forth, and I said, but it's the fees is why we stopped, you know?
Yeah.
Um, but he said, that wouldn't bother me, the fee, he said, I get, uh, you know, other perks.
And it's a convenience fee, and I understand that, I don't think we should charge above and beyond
Right.
what the transaction company is charging, cause I mean-
Neither do I, I'm with you, yeah.
You, you, you know?
Neither do I, I'm-
And that's it, I know.
We're on the same page on that a hundred percent, absolutely.
On the, on picking up the costs, are there other cost savings associated with offering credit cards that we realize, like saving of staff time or mailing costs, or-
Mm.
There's definitely some of that, and actually one of the reasons I'd like to see us have this be a little more robust is the mail piece. Um, it's one of the things that is attractive to me about some of the changes we have made is the capacity to do electronic billing, um, of which will save us eventually on mailing, that's kind of in its, in its pilot phase at this point. We've done a couple of rounds now with a couple dozen payers who've signed in as early adopters. Um, but once we get that ramped up, that will be a significant savings, and that's one of the things these companies, um, when they respond to our bid, will be pitching us is, what do we think your savings might be on those sorts of things over time? Postage, et cetera. One of the things I have asked for in the past, um, and will ask for again, is, is how will you help us get there? In terms of marketing, in terms of getting people to get comfortable with and adopt these solutions. Ask, because they can be significant cost savings, you know, for someone like me who's sending forty thousand pieces of mail um, twice a year, it's, it's significant over time to do less than that.
In, in that cost savings, would picking up the fee balance out, cause I know it was prohibitive for us to do that before-
Maybe at some point, um, my, I haven't done math on that, to be totally honest with you, so I can't give you a clear answer. My, my knee-jerk reaction after having seen this go for a while is it would take a while to get to that place.
Okay.
Where, to get to your break even where it makes sense for the county, and we, we could always revisit it at that point too. I think probably you'd be in the end of a contract term anyway before you would see that kinda thing, and that would be an inflection point to then take a look at what the structure is.
I think it's definitely something to consider, cause you hate to add a fee for residents if it's actually saving us overall money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we'd wanna encourage them rather than put a little barrier up, it's a very small barrier, I realize, but I, I know it affects me when I go to make a credit card transaction and I see that it's more, I usually get my checkbook out, you know, so it, you know-
Well-
Right.
That was one of our factors in water resource pain, it was when we looked at what it costs us to process a check. Um, our cheapest payment type is ACHs right now.
Mm-hmm.
The second most expensive is checks and credit cards, and they're roughly even in terms of cost. Um, and the cash is actually the most expensive type of payment to pay.
Well, you know-
And we don't charge the check people, we don't charge the cash people. Um, but then we also get a lower fee, so they will keep that break even.
And the most subject to fraud is the other piece, cash is also the most subject to fraud payment stream, so the less cash we're doing, the better.
And the- Yeah.
Yeah. But again, those are benefits that come with it, so that, that was one of the logics for paying the fee.
Brad, do we have an option to pay over the phone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For, for, for what we do, and I'm making that, we will make that an option.
Okay. Because the reason I ask is I know like when I go to make my credit card payments over the phone, they say, you know, if you do it with a customer service, it's, they'll charge you ten bucks if you do it through the automated system, so I'm just wondering if that's an option.
Um, in most cases-
And they debit out on my checking account, so.
And, yeah, and in most cases, and I've talked to a lot of these folks as recently as last week, cause they have been, a lot have been in Word, Word Conference,
Well.
imagine, um, but the fee's gotta be the same across all payment streams, whether it's phone, internet, counter, I mean, so generally speaking, it'll be the same, but that's a thing we can ask them for, you know?
It's like I said, it, they do it as an ACH versus a, like, an debit.
Yeah, right, well, and right, ACHs have a different rate than, than ECHs, and then credit cards and debit cards, often the debit cards and credit cards have a different rate too.
贷支卡. Mm-hmm. I just wondered. Mm-hmm.
There's a program where if you're using, I think it's Visa, MasterCard, or Discover
Yeah.
for a government transaction, it's a flat rate of three dollars and ninety-five cents, which for us is way better.
Yeah.
Right, so it just, it just depends on what your business line looks like. That's one of the reasons I'm asking people who are putting in to provide for me, what they intend to be using the, these payment streams for, what their anticipated volume is, um, who they anticipate the fee payer being, and if they have any special instructions, cause that's gonna tell a different story across different sorts of transactions, right?
That'll help in negotiations also.
Right, right, the more we can give the, the bidders upfront in terms of what we're actually looking for, the better we can, we can do.
So Emmy, you're gonna get that back to us today, so we can-
I had one question myself. Towards the bottom, it says that if the county is paying the fee, we have to provide notice. Is that, was I reading that correctly?
Can you, can you point me where you're looking?
He's, he's about on page one, top of the issue, about county posting the, the-
That's true if anybody's charging a fee, that's from the ORC, if anybody's charging a fee.
That's- What I was reading, that I agree with, what I was reading in there though was it also says if we're not paying a fee, we need to post that. Which is not required. Maybe I misread.
I don't, I'm not following.
Where, where are you at, Todd, and second?
I mean, we have the provision that follows that that says if we have a transaction that's dishonored, we, they may-
Yeah, I understand that.
I'm not seeing this, I'm not a feature.
Which part, Todd, do you have it?
I don't have it in front of me, when I read through the providing notice, it made it sound as though-
Do you need, you wanna look at it, Todd, something?
Yes, and I might have misread.
Okay.
Is there a specific limitation on which credit cards you'll take? Cause I know a lot of places won't take Discover or American Express.
So it's a good, and it's, so in this piece there is not one, and my anticipation will be we're gonna try to make it as broad as possible.
Yeah. Okay.
That's one of the things I, in the RFP, will, will be clear about and have been clear about in the past, we wanna have the broadest possible set of options. Um, and then in the responses that we have historically gotten, they'll lay out if there are different fees for different cards.
Yeah.
That's, you know, we try to avoid that too, cause that's confused, but yeah.
That's been my experience, different cards do have-
Yeah.
Yeah, and certainly on the merchant side, we, American Express is the most expensive and the one that people don't take for that reason, and I am an, an American Express card holder,
Yeah.
That's why people run, yeah.
So I have a personal stake in there being an option, so yeah, I, I'm, I'm sensitive to that issue, we're gonna, we're gonna think about that.
I guess so. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think it was that third one from the bottom, the payer shall pay all fees unless specifically informed otherwise.
Right. So-
Oh, informed.
So does that mean we have to tell our customer you are not paying a fee with every transaction that we do?
Not on a transaction by transaction basis, so Todd, in your system, it would look something like, um, a, a, a piece at the bottom, a disclaimer saying, you know, there are fees associated with this, they're not passed through, it, that's an information piece. The county is paying a fee.
And do we have to post that in our office now? I got, I just was curious as to that. Currently, if you don't pass on the fee, you don't have to notify.
Disclose it.
That makes it sound like we do now, in which case the question is what level of notification, but that can work out.
Chris, do you have any input on that, or?
You know, I, I would have to, I'm sorry.
Research it, yeah.
Chris wasn't the prosecuting attorney, you reviewed the-
No.
No, that's my, and Allison's not available.
My estimate maybe.
But I do know Allison, they put a lot of time on, honestly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question, does, would the county know what the merchant is charging on a transaction?
Yeah.
Transaction by transaction?
In the contract.
Yeah.
They would?
Yeah, so that shows up in our reporting on the back end, um-
By transaction at the-
Yeah, and I, and I've got that for what we do in the county treasurer's office now, so I get a report on the backside that says, here's who's paid, um, here's what they paid the county, here's what our charge was, that, that's an, that's in a mechanism by which we can make sure that they're honoring their grant with us, that it's, yeah, that's a good question, yeah, we, let me see that.
Okay, did you give Brad a copy of this?
Oh, wow, look at you.
Yeah, is she good or what?
So, so are we okay then? What's it like it reads, or do we need to clarify? If we need to notify on fees that are not being passed on?
I think that's a flag to-
We'll look at it, yeah.
Be aware of in your process going forward. Make sure we're not putting some unintended burden.
Uh, yeah.
I think it's worded broadly enough that that's a note for you in leaving this process.
Mm-hmm.
But it's a good, a good point to-
It's constructive notice.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, and I would go back to, I'm sorry, I don't remember the woman's name, but the prosecutor who worked on that.
Allison. And just done that check, huh?
So, yeah.
Yeah. In check.
Okay, now we have another one. Another, our resolution, Brad, being-
And, or, so, are you, you wanna-
We, we, we'll leave.
Okay, do you have to go on him individually, or?
Yeah.
We do, actually, do wanna do that now, if you choose, okay, so I'll move to adopt
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
the resolution authorizing the acceptance of payments by financial transaction devices for expenses owed to the county.
Okay, I will second, real calling, Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes, speaking?
Yes.
All right, good questions, thank you for that. So, the other one then is about the Financial Wellness Fair, which you are aware, this would be third one of these that we do this year, um, we are slated to do it in November. Um, and the thing that is a little different about this one is I am soliciting assistance from, um, entities who have been involved in the fair in the past with, um, getting the word out, beefing up attendance, making sure that the people who need to know about this do and have an option to get there. Um, so I have created a committee that's looking at that on kind of an ad hoc basis, that consists of a couple of the, um, we, we asked, uh, people who are consistently attending the event, um, so that has been, um, a couple of major nonprofits, United Way, FNCS, um, several of our local community banks, um, so I've got an ad hoc group together that's helping to do that. One of the things they suggested that we'd look at was, um, putting together a budget to actually, um, do a whole public awareness marketing for the event, um, and so in the course of doing that, I had, again, several conversations with our assistant prosecutor Allison and with the auditor's office about the mechanism for doing that. Um, the auditor's office, Rebecca Ritterbeck was, um, pretty adamant that we could do this in the same stream that JFS does, um, does things for bigger events that they put on, yeah, so this resolution kinda mimics some of those things.
The doubt burden, yeah.
Um, you'll see that, um, I'm looking at monetary donations not to exceed three thousand dollars, I think that'll cover us um, for what we need to take, uh, marketing wise. Um, I have a marketing budget that is information at this point, but, um, you know, that'll, that'll all be underwritten through donations from these entities then, and so what this does is it creates a mechanism by which the auditor is authorized to create a code that we can then pay these donations into. Um, you know, it makes that flow through from an audit standpoint, um, a little more clearly, so.
Yeah, because I had to ask the question before you got here, it's almost like a little overkill because I, to the acceptance of donations in support of this wellness fair, cause normally you would bring a resolution to us stating exactly the person's name, address, and the amount of the donation.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it, it's fine if the other two wanna pass this resolution, but it, it's not necessarily needed per se, I mean, unless-
I don't disagree with you, uh, but the prosecutor does, so in the interest of keeping everybody happy, and potentially the auditor at some juncture, state auditor, so in the interest of keeping everybody happy, that, this is where we landed, and that'll give us the capacity to do what we need to do.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, we, we normally don't pass a resolution to accept donations
Yeah, I understand.
i- in general, and put a, do not exceed three thou- normally you just bring us a list on a resolution saying this is the person who donated, so.
I can speak to that, Allison, I did speak about that, I think that was just an additional safeguard for the treasurer, that's, maybe sometimes we get overly cautious, but-[1703.64] That's, maybe sometimes we get overly cautious, but.
Yeah.
It, 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 what it does is it puts aside any potential appearance of impropriety. Full stop. If we say this is, I have an authorization to take this on behalf of. Because we do, we also do business with some of these banks in the treasurer's office with some CDs and that sort of thing, so it's just a.
Which that makes it a little different than the other donations, where you like the dog.
Yeah, there's a little distinction to be made there. And again, I think this is more of a abundance of caution kind of thing.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate the, the abundance of caution, and I know you'll follow up as per usual with how we accept donations. And I, it's also just helpful to know as a flag that that would be coming, so.
In case someone asks us if, if we were aware of it's legitimate, so.
So I'll move to accept the resolution, which is the acceptance of donations in support of the Fordage County Financial Wellness Fair to the Fordage County Treasurer.
Okay, I will second.
Real calling.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes?
Speaking?
Yes.
Thank y'all very much.
Two resolutions for your birthday.
All right, good.
Celebrate on Brad.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you all?
Hi, Laura.
Hi. Thank you. Be patient there. So first item we have is the purchase order for the Shalersville Water Treatment Plant, Sand Bed Number Three. As you can see, we started a project for the improvement of our sand beds out there, and these are the half-fluid sand beds for all of our backwash water from the softener stuffs. And they hadn't been maintained since they'd been installed, so they needed, they weren't draining, and we noticed that they were no longer draining. So we took Sand Bed Number Three out of service because that one was at risk of overflowing. So this purchase order is for the work to be done to Sand Bed Number Three, so that we can drain the other two sand beds.
Okay.
And we did go out for, we did send the RFP out for the work for Sand Bed Number Three. And because that one was a critical one, we wanted to fix that one first, so we could drain the other two, evaluate those, and see what work would be needed for those other two as well. Okay, questions on that?
No, and since it's under fifty thousand, we don't have to get rebids, even though it was great that you said comparison.
We went out and got four, and we only got two back, and so the lowest one was the Stanley Miller.
Okay. Pardon me?
Journal entry on that?
Yeah. Will you get a journal entry to approve?
Okay, will that come back, or were you looking for that to happen today?
Well, if you need a journal entry, would you want me, I can get that back to you today.
Have you needed approval sooner than later?
Yeah, our engineer wants.
You don't really need a journal entry.
No.
Because it's, they're gonna put a purchase requisition in, and it's gonna go through that kind of thing.
Okay.
It's just information.
I mean, for discussion, for you guys to know that they're doing the work.
Okay.
But you don't, you don't need an official resolution or.
Or journal entry.
Okay.
So you have our blessing.
Okay.
I think journal entry.
And then the second item was for our purchasing of vehicles. And I did do some investigation, and we hadn't replaced any vehicles in two thousand sixteen or two thousand seventeen. We started doing vehicle replacements in two thousand eighteen. So this list shows all the vehicles that were needing to be replaced, and they were based on age, mileage, and the number, the maintenance history on the vehicles. I think the only one on here that we are keeping in our fleet is the SE eighty-nine. And we're gonna be keeping that one until a larger pair is needed, and that is a, I think that's an extended cap pickup, and that's probably why we're keeping it. It's one of our water vehicles.
And I love the second page, says this amount is supported in the two thousand nineteen budget. You guys are trained well.
Yes.
That's always the question.
We do have our vehicle replacements in the budget, and we are aware of our fleet, and we do, we believe Ben's in taking over the technology division and starting that up. That's part of what he's looking into, is doing this, and we have asset management to, the vehicles are absorbed into that as well to look at, because they are part of our assets, and to determine how old they are, are they reaching their.
Life capacity.
Right.
So, so these will be actual purchases, not a lease through.
Correct. These are purchases, and they're through the state cooperative purchasing program.
It was very helpful that you broke down as to which funds the total amount was gonna be.
Yes, and, because some of these will be splits, and some of them are just in water or.
Seem to be zero.
Right. It just depends on how the vehicle's being used, if it needs to be a split.
Hmm, very good.
Just, so Todd and I are clear then?
Yes.
Not every, not all vehicles are going to go through the enterprise system then? I don't know if that was ever decided by the, all of you, that we're gonna do the lease thing, or we're gonna, we're gonna let some people buy?
I thought we had said that the people that wanted to buy, yeah, could buy.
Case by case, is that gonna affect?
Okay, if that's what you're.
Will that affect the enterprise deal we've got going on?
It, it doesn't affect the actual agreement we have in place.
Okay.
As with anything, the more volume you do, the better business you get.
Right.
And so if we divvy up our fleet, you run into that. But the question that's gonna come, for example, Water Resource has its own money. It's fairly easy to say, yes, they're gonna spend it. Dave, I know, also would like to buy his vehicle outright on dog or in funds. The question becomes when, for example, Janet wants to buy a vehicle, it's out of the general fund. Does she still have the ability to say, no, I wanna purchase it outright? Technically, every vehicle is the commissioner's vehicle, so the question becomes, at what level are you giving the decision to purchase or lease to the users versus the commissioners?
Right.
And that's where we're unclear, I guess.
Can I ask a, who wasn't here at the time of this, question? It sounds like we allocated during the budget process, vehicle purchase money. So was was that decision reviewed then in a discussion? Or was, you know what I mean?
Some of it, the enterprise happened in November, and budgets were already established particularly for the enterprise funds. But, you know, Water Resource has a six million dollar capital budget, of which the cars are a piece that comes out of it. I mean, they definitely have the money. And like I said, for Water Resource, because particularly the unique vehicles, maybe it makes sense for us to purchase. The question becomes, at, at what level are you? Does everyone come and ask? I guess we're just trying to get clear, because we're trying to tell people the process. And when we don't know, it's hard for us to tell them.
And I think initially, for your benefit, Kathleen, we knew there was going to be some bumps along the way, because we just started this, and that's what we're trying to get settled into, what exactly is the picture. And you're right, Todd, we don't have a clear picture yet of who can and who can't. But I think in this case, you know, we, but, but you're right, when somebody is gonna pay for it from the general fund, we're gonna have to reconsider.
Well, they would pay for their lease costs too, out of their fund.
Right.
I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Wherever there, wherever there's enterprise money or whatever, those departments will be charged their leases, like job and family services, the vehicles we have leased for them, they're going to be paying for them from their budgets. So the same thing would happen if, in fact, they were to lease theirs. That would be coming out of the money that was set aside for the purchase.
I think it just, it just comes down to the question, what makes more sense?
Yes.
Because like with Water Resources, they have their own mechanics and stuff, and these are more like specialty vehicles
Yeah.
specific to their department. It, it would make sense, but, but I understand what you're saying is, but even if they buy outside of enterprise as a lease, we still can contract through enterprise for the maintenance? Is that correct? Is that still the case?
That's correct. We can lease them and still do our own maintenance. I mean, we're, we're free, there are cars.
Purchase them. I, I mean, purchase them.
Enterprise is a service, for us.
Okay.
Again, the more we buy, though, the less leverage we have on the leases that we are doing.
Exactly.
And that, you know, so the question is, at what point is that decision?
And these.
Where is it being made, I guess?
Well, the vehicles that they're buying here, transit van, SUVs, and trucks.
Yeah.
Those are run-of-the-mill that we're buying through the lease process too. It's not like they're the special backing trucks or whatever, which I would agree would be direct purchases kind of thing.
Now, did Laura, did you guys discuss the enterprise and the possibility of leasing instead of purchasing?
I know we and Jean had looked into that, and then we went through the state. We were just trying to get the best deal that we could, I think, and that's why we did put a statement here that says, unless a local dealer can match or beat the state price, which we had one that was willing to do that, but then it just didn't work out.
Oh.
So that's why he went back to the state.
How did you do the comparison on the lease versus purchase?
I think cost, with the way the budget was going, they wanted to stay with the state co- cooperative purchasing program. I don't think we wanted to lease the vehicles, just because of when we have our vehicles, we usually keep them, as you can see, we keep them for a very long time, because some of the vehicles we augment to, after the, after the market, we augment the vehicle to, like, we will put lighting bars on them for our guys, they'll have special requests, and those wouldn't be coming on a leased vehicle. We put those on ourselves, and so we do augment the vehicles, so I think for us, we would rather, you know, lease a vehicle. I think that was the determination.
You know, we talked about the mileage, because a lot of these cars, the mileage, like the sheriff, as we all know, they have a lot of miles.
Yeah.
And with enterprise, we get a better price when they take that car off, when they sell it at auction and everything than we do. And that was one of the main things too, because the sheriff's department, we definitely want to go with enterprise, just because of the mileage thing, but.
And I can ask, revisit that with Jean and Lee, but I know that they did review that as a collective, and we do, we did take inventory of everything. We went through and had all of the supervisors go through all their vehicles and request, you know, what was their need, what did they actually need in the vehicles, so we did have a lot of thought into it.
Okay. So Todd and Joanne, just to clarify, even if they purchase the car outright, they could still get the maintenance agreement through enterprise?
They're all for separate, the key is they have their mechanics, so that's why.
Well, I understand that, but I'm talking about other departments, if, if this is an issue. It makes more sense for them.
At any level, you can lease or buy. You can use the enterprise maintenance system, or you can go to your own shop and pay for it individually. You can purchase gas through our theme, or you can put in PLO, whatever policy says you can. And then there's the Geo Tab, which is the tracking and all that, and our policy requires that you have it, or you have it right now, but.
But my concern is.
Those are all separate.
If, if they're buying them outright, and they, I mean, in this case, they have their own shop, and they have their own mechanics that can work on them. But for another department, we don't wanna let them just carte blanche, start going to whoever they want necessarily, because it could cut into our cost savings that we're supposed to realize with the enterprise program, is my point.
I suppose. There is a certain amount of volume that creates better pricing, both in terms of the lease and turnover. You know, if we're only turning over one, one car every three years, enterprise isn't gonna bother with us. If we're turning over five or ten every year, we're gonna get premium service, and the more you divvy the fleet up into, we wanna purchase, we wanna purchase, we wanna purchase, the less you have under that lease program to be able to turn over.
Yeah, I understand that part.
The less we're gonna receive those benefits.
I'm just concerned about the maintenance of a car that we purchase outright.
Right. You can purchase and still have it on the maintenance program. That's correct.
And that's what I'm saying, because I don't want individual departments or elected officials that, that wanna purchase outright, which that's fine, but I don't want them to go, get away from the maintenance agreement of the vendors that we were given, because then we're looking at, you know.
Ultimately, it is your decision, because they're your vehicles. The question is what discretion you're offering.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So I, it seems like it would be helpful if you and Jean and whoever makes sense in the department maybe sat down with Joanne and Todd, just to talk through the enterprise program and go over that analysis. And I think it sounds like this is the right direction, but it seems like we should do that check, because we have it. And it doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like that analysis was done carefully with the enterprise.
We didn't, we didn't get any lease pricing.
I, I don't think we're gonna realize the savings until, I think, we talked, Todd and I talked about a year or so.
Well.
Where we kind of are, because it's hard to do an analysis when you're just not sure where you're falling within enterprise.
But all these decisions are gonna impact that at the end of the year, so.
What I'm thinking is just checking, okay, say we were to lease these vehicles, and they're standard vehicles that there are add-ons. What does that cost? What are the add-ons? I mean, I think that some, not too, I don't think this is a big amount of work, but I think just running that check waiting an additional week.
Oh, so you don't wanna approve that today?
Is it in our market?
You can't, to purchase a vehicle, you need a resolution necessity anyways, for each vehicle.
Okay, so we don't have to do it today?
She's just bringing it up for it.
And that resolution will specify whether you're purchasing, leasing, or whatever else you're doing.
Okay.
Usually with Water Resources, they've always come and discussed you, with you guys first, and said, well.
It was like, that's what I figured when we were dealing.
And then you bring the resolution necessity back.
Okay.
It, you know, it doesn't waste doing it in case there's a change or whatever.
Yeah, and that could still come back on your timeframe that you were working towards.
Next week, right.
Just in the meantime, if that check could be done and maybe discussed with us next week, or.
Do you want that before the resolution, or?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I, I think that you have time before that.
I know we looked into it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know what? I think this is also a change of mindset too for the county, because, I mean, leasing, it, it's like never-ending. It's like, yeah, leave the water for, you constantly gotta payment, whereas a lot of the elected officials and stuff are still in the mindset that, hey, I buy a car, I can use it for ten years, they don't have high miles on it. Why should I have a continual payment, or why should the general fund have a continual payment? So.
Yeah, 'cause I know some of our vehicles, there really isn't a reason, especially as some of our the extended cab trucks, we don't, that, those are a high-cost item, and some of the add-ons that we have to put on them, if there's like a lynch or anything, that would be an expensive expense.
Expenses, yeah.
I don't know if there's any other.
See, I still think that makes sense, though, if you didn't have a vehicle and you're gonna keep it ten years to buy.
Exactly.
The caveat to that, though, is every, every community across the country has a water department. And they also like these type of trucks, and many of them are in good financial position, so they like to buy used.
Right.
And so the question is, can we turn ours over earlier and get the used, and that, that's, that's where it comes into play, is we don't wanna lease and keep a car ten years, then why the heck did you lease?
Right.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that, but that aftermarket is what we're very unfamiliar with, because we've never participated in it. And that's part of where we're kind of listening to what enterprise is saying, we're listening to what other communities are saying.
Because they could get a better deal.
And trying to match up the CFA there.
It means our departments, of course.
Right. But you know what? I mean, a water truck is, there's water departments everywhere that want that same equipment on their truck. So the question is, would enterprise be able to match that and get a good price, in which case maybe it does make sense to pay the lease cost and get that better sale?
Something to look into, for sure, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks so much.
Cheryl, Ian? Yes. Can we take a two-minute? Oh, yes, we're right back. Okay. You're back.
You don't think we have, do I have to do this?
I don't think so.
We do.
You don't think we have any good.
I just have a bunch of things to discuss today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Things that have cropped up, or that I wanted to be able to talk with you.
You guys want me to wait till something comes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She, she should be right there.
I didn't text you last night.
Well, I didn't get home until after seven o'clock. It was a long day. I'm gonna go there after I get things settled downstairs a little bit and see, you know, the doctor's supposed to be coming in, and I wanna be there when they do, because Ken.
You need to hear it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then when you ask, it's like, well, I don't know. Yeah, I think they, but I don't know, yeah.
Sometimes they're just nervous, and they don't hear it, even, no matter how many times you say it, it's not.
Yeah.
So how's his spirits?
Well, he was teasing with the nurses and everything, you know, which he does a lot, so that made me feel better.
Yeah.
Or was it, I don't know. Well, he, he laughs all the time. He said, have you ever told Sabrina that I sit with her all the time? The bench at Giant Eagle, right? So, because he was having some difficulty breathing when he was walking, he would make it to the branch, bench that's outside Giant Eagle that has her picture on it. He goes, I'm sitting with Sabrina today, and I'm, he catches me off guard when he says, you know. It's like, oh, now I know, you went to Giant Eagle, but, you know, whatever, yeah.
It's like a cool hangout for people.
Yeah. Well, he goes from there to there, and then goes there, and that's when I knew that there was something that was starting that wasn't quite right. Sorry, guys.
No, that's okay.
Well, the first thing that I wanted to bring up today was the Clement Nelson Retainer Contract that we entered into last year. That was the one that, that they originally started with us to bring services, questions that possibly HR would have, or whatever. It's set to expire May thirty-first of this year. I don't know if you want to extend it another year. I don't know if, how much conversation they'll be having now, since we're, the compensation plan was completed, which was a different contract. But I thought I would ask you, because if we want to extend, then I need to start getting that paperwork in order.
Didn't we decide that Janet could probably refactor and do what they were going to do?
I believe that was your decision, so.
Yeah, 'cause I'm not really inclined to. Yeah, because I'm not really inclined to, to extend it. And especially because, like you said, Janet can factor the jobs. And we have, with having that new.
Plan?
Attorney.
Oh, the new.
That we hired.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I, I'm not inclined if they need to have the extension, but okay.
Okay. If that, then I will get the appropriate paperwork on on that one too.
Okay.
Which brings me to the, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I just? Can I clarify? The labor attorney is not related to the Clements Nelson.
That's number two. No, no. Okay. Number two now is the, the attorney that you guys retained, Mr. Wilkins. Now, I, I noticed that in the agreement, his monthly stipend is $250. There was not a cap within the contract. So I didn't know how, you know, there was a couple of questions. First of all, we should cap it so that I know how much to encumber under that contract. And then secondly, I asked Janet, because I wasn't privy to the conversations with this contract. Is he contacting one body here in Portage County that's going to kind of like keep track of the hours? Or is any certain department allowed to call and, you know, pick up the numbers?
Yeah, because I think we, we must have left that out. And it was discussed that Janet would be the gateway to them. Because we did not want everyone in the whole world calling, because then that's billable hours for us.
Okay. Because it wasn't, didn't stipulate that in the contract as I read it. And I wanted to be clear, so I want to know when the bill comes in. Who's supposed to authorize and say, yes, we spent 15 hours within this month or whatever. So it does sound that Janet would be appropriate, but I think somewhere or another, we need to make sure that Mr. Wilkins understands that as well.
Right. I do not think that was made clear, but I am glad you're bringing it to our attention. We discussed it.
We definitely discussed it.
But I'll take it that it will be, I think Janet, we talked too about a little bit of the difference between billable hour versus, you know, a, a larger retainer. So I think she's prepared for that, but I think that's a helpful catch for us.
All right. And then as far as a, a cap seal on the year amount. I noticed in the budget, there was $45,000 that was put in the budget for legal services for this year.
How much have we used?
This hasn't been, this hasn't been done at all. You had your first three months of Ron Chabowsky's old.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Um, so it'd be my suggestion maybe to start with $25,000 to give us, I mean.
Just to see what happens.
Well, and I don't really know personally what contract issues are coming up this year. You may not even have any.
I don't think we have any this year.
So, and this goes from now until into next year. So if there's things that are starting at, at the first of next year, it would cover some of those expenses too, because I'll carry the contract over. But I, I would think that that would be a fair amount to start. If you're okay with that, that's what we'll go with. Twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Will you check with Janet about what con, where we are in the different contracts?
With any kind?
I think that, I think it's correct that we don't have any, just coming up this year. I think that's the spring, when there's a couple to come up a year from now. But just double check.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's why it was a good time to make this transition.
Right.
Because he could catch up and, you know, get acclimated and, yeah.
Be doing what he's doing, okay. It should be as high.
And then he's, he's paid $250 an hour. Do we have, did you, did I hear you saying we have a monthly stipend to him? Because I thought.
I, no, I think it's, um, I brought a copy up here. It's, it's $250. It's $250 per hour, no monthly stipend.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
He's sending a monthly invoice in. He'll submit an invoice every month or whatever, but it's only $250.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, because when I heard you say stipend, I'm like, wait a minute.
That, that was like, yeah, okay.
Thank you. No, you're fine.
What we are thinking is going to be a cost savings.
Oh, yeah, from the board, yeah. So I would think, I would think so. Um, the next was regional planning and the USDA parking of their vehicle. I think you saw a communication possibly from Todd Peets with regard. I know that there's been talk with USDA coming down and moving into our building, and we're going to have a lease with them eventually. And I understand the reasons why it hasn't happened quite yet. And USDA provides their person a vehicle which is parked up there and has received some damage because it's kind of left in the open. While we can assign a parking spot to it down here in the F lot, I do feel though that we would need some kind of a memorandum of agreement until a lease can be drawn up protecting us, because if one of our employees or someone that's else is parking in the lot hits that car, we wouldn't want to be responsible for the damage. We need to let them understand that they're responsible for the, for any damage. If a child goes through the parking lot and, you know, picks that car to hit, same kind of thing. They need to know that, you know, it's, it's not nearly as vulnerable in our lot as it is where it is right now. But still for protections for us, I think we need to have a simple M O U between dictating that.
But, but you know what, Joanne? I talked to Todd Peets yesterday about this, because I, I'm really concerned about doing that. Because you know, we have our cars and stuff that get vandalized in our lots. I mean, so it's not like we're necessarily a safer place to store. And we have also had other tenants that would like additional spots. And we've been, we've told them we don't have any additional spots, maybe specific, but I'm concerned how that's going to proceed. Because Todd said, you know, she had a personal emergency that has prohibited her from coming to work for like three months now. And he said she was also talking to Mayor Seaman about maybe putting her truck, I guess it is, down here.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's a truck in the police lot down here. Or she was going to ask USDA, could she just take it home so that it wouldn't be vandalized? Because like I said, I, I just happened to, to intercept a, a call from a current tenant. And if this gets out, we're giving, we're giving space to someone that's not even our tenant. I, I just worry how that's going to be perceived. And, and like I said, Todd told me yesterday that she was working with Mayor Seaman, who she actually happens to be related to. And she also was going to talk to her boss about maybe just taking the vehicle home to her house.
Well, she's not going to be there, sure.
Yeah, that's, that's my, my concern with the, the whole thing. And like I said, she's not yet a tenant. And I asked Todd where that was at, and they said it's, it's understanding that they still want to come here. She very much liked the space that you had designated. But they've had some changes at USDA, and then she's been absent, so we're not.
Yeah, once she becomes our tenant, then, you know, she's offered, it's fine anyway. But I just said, you know, I saw the email come through and it was like, well, what, I want to be able to answer her.
Sure.
So if there's already a workaround, that's fine. That saves us an M O U having to do with USDA getting it down here earlier.
If there's not a workaround, then I think we should consider letting her park here. Yeah, exactly. Especially if it's a future tenant.
Okay. All right.
And we're not talking about fleet of vehicles.
Okay, so Todd Peets will know whether she can get.
He'll know, yeah. Yeah, because really she's his tenant. All due respect.
Okay. Um, we ran all agreements. Number four, Amy had asked me, Amy Cooper, if, when the time comes, would we be willing to rent our space here, and space in Columbiana County, to future wits? And she wanted to know what would be included in those leases, so I wanted to just review that with you. Columbiana County, really, we don't, we don't include cleaning or plowing or anything like that, because it's so far away. Now, our maintenance people will go down and the building systems, like air conditionings and things like that, they service the heat net on the seasons. Our guys go down and do that. Small items, they contract with a local gentleman that will come in and fix a plumbing issue or whatever. Now here, different story. Here, because we can't break up the utilities, we can't break up. Um, we have, our, our people clean, our people, we, we do the utilities, we do the trash, the whole nine yards. So if that's okay with you still, that's the response I will give to her, that should everything go and we're going to lease with whomever, those things would still be offered to them as they have been now. Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and back to the RPC, the USDA parking.
Yes.
Todd said she will actually need two parking spots, because she drives her personal vehicle and she'll need, and then she'll need a spot instead for, for the USDA car.
That's when she's a tenant, right?
When she's a tenant.
She's not trying to park her personal car here.
No, she's, she's working from home because of her situation.
Yeah, and, I, I get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, on number five, U H drug testing. Okay. So U H isn't always the easiest, they're not always the easiest folks to work with sometimes when you're trying to contract services. And the drug testing is basically for our C D L drivers, it has to be done. And a couple, I think it's been now two years, they changed and started using a different system, which made it very hard to get a contract with you folks in the departments because of the way their attorneys interpreted things. And I have had the prosecutor's office go through these things so many different times. Um, so what, ideally what they wanted and what happened, and it wasn't, I don't think it was intentional by any means. An agreement was sent to the H R department and Jenna signed it. And it was for her to, you know, for the drug testing to be done and for her to receive the, the, the results, which through, you have to have a certain person who's dealing with it do it. You can't just let anybody. Well, um, the same thing, Water Resources is looking for that. But the information coming back was that the board needed to sign it, you know, it shouldn't be signed by one of their employees. And one of the things that Chris wanted to make sure that we misunderstood was that your employees shouldn't be signing agreements. So I think to fix it, I think what we can do is we can go back to the one that was signed by Jenna, bring it up and say that you're authorizing her to get the results. Uh, you might sign that agreement, re-sign it and say we're authorizing her for job, or for Water Resources, we would do the same kind of thing. You guys will sign, but authorize Allison to get the results on their behalf. Um, I think that will be a workaround, don't you, that will work for everyone. And in that way. But it would probably be something that we would want to get out to the, our directors that make sure when you're seeing things, when they say agreement.
Employee doesn't stop.
Stop, yeah, and stop and go through the normal process. Um, multiple inventory is slated to start next week.
Oh, yay.
Um, the gentleman, they pegged off four days. I just wanted to make sure that you don't necessarily want me to have to have security down there while they're doing inventory. It's, they're a bonded insured company. My, my interpretation with meeting from the owner is that I wouldn't have any worries that they would be, you know, taking anything or, you know,
That's what they do, right.
that something else would come up. This is, yeah, this is their livelihood. Um, we certainly can, you know, have them down there, but we would pay for that. And to be honest, we're going to sit there most of the time and just be watching. I think that we can trust those people, those folks to be there and do what they want to, you know, take the inventory for us and get back. And I will make it clear with them that if anybody, if any of the county departments stop because they see cars or whatever going in down there, that they shouldn't let the folks in to ask for anything or do anything. Um, but hopefully by the end of next week, I'll have the full report and we'll see where we're at.
Good. I'll be so glad to put that to bed.
Yeah. Um, that, and number seven, with the word of elections, back last year, I think at the end of the year, they turned through some information on things that they wanted to have done in their offices. And the first three items are things that we've gone and had our contractors come in and give us quotes on. On the electrical upgrade, H V A C, and there's a section of the roof before we would put any new H V A C equipment up, that we would want to make sure the roof is solid, because it hasn't been worked on for years. So we're, we're at a ticket of almost 75 grand to get that going. And I just want to make sure that we're okay to move forward with those. I don't, I think.
I think these are needs, Joanne, you know, so I, I don't.
It is things that they've honestly been asking for for quite some time. Our maintenance department on D, they replaced a lot of lights and things down there that they're very happy with, that, that, you know, we were able to take care of right away. The electrical upgrades are actually putting more electric in areas, in rooms that they're doing more things in. Um, the H V A C in particular takes care of the, the room where they're doing training with folks. And even where they have some of their equipment that is sensitive to.
To the heat, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so it's, and it isn't anything that wasn't considered back when they wanted to do the $3 million renovation. Those areas were all being done with different upgrades as well. My recommendation is, is that since we have the budget money, I think we should for, go forward and do them. Um, but I'm also cautious to make sure that we're doing them in the seasonal times when it's not affecting any election coming up or whatever.
Oh, right.
So they're in ways, whatever. So if we can get started on these, I think this can all now be done before the November time.
Right.
Um, I have worked with them. Some of the other things that they had asked for was new furniture, a new electrover, which is the card where they keep all their cards in a electronic fashion. Um, and I've given them some vendors with sites that they can look at to make sure and we can get quotes from those folks. They worked, they were working with a, a company of their own on their office setup with, they wanted some new.
The cubicles or dividers.
For their private workers. And I haven't seen any of that yet. I'm supposed to be getting copies of all that, but that, that's not, that step, those steps aren't ready yet on those. But these things that we can move forward with, I'd like to go ahead and just get going if that's, if you have no objections to those.
No. Joanne, can I ask, are there, are there things that they're still, other than that new furniture, I mean, piece that they're still pushing, or?
Sure. Um, well, that's going to be, there's executive session that I need to talk with you guys about on a couple of things there.
Pushing. Okay.
But for the most part, I think we've ticked almost everything off the list that we can. I will review with Shannon, because I wasn't there for the meeting. I was at another meeting today that they, they had with you guys.
Yeah, I, I was there. I got my notes.
So I want to see what else was there. But I'm pretty sure we've gotten, these things right here were the crux of a lot of their different issues coming up, so.
Especially because the, the training room, which is also where a lot of the machines and stuff are stored, that they, they said the baseboard heat, there was no heat in the training room.
We have another, one of their other little rooms where we had pipes that swayed in the summertime, that weren't taken care of and getting those, that done. And that affects them, plus J F S right above them.
Did you wrap those? Is that what you did?
We have to, we have to completely tear off and then rewrap, re-insulate. And over the course of the year, the insulation has fallen and gotten wet and fallen. So.
I just want to, uh.
Verify, yeah.
Check in with them.
Absolutely.
Because they had such an extensive lesson. I'm really glad that you've been with them.
Oh, yeah. We're ticking on them, yeah.
You've already done some of the stuff. And then.
I will go through the list again though and see what else there is that isn't in, and, you know, highlight what we haven't done and send it to you.
Yeah. Well, one of the things is, is they want the counter to be A D A compliant. They talked about that.
And that's, they've been figuring that in kind of with the furniture move. Right now, you know, when you walk in the glass doors, the counter's right here. Well, now they're, one of the furniture people have given the suggestion of moving the counter, like, and you walk in and the counter would be this way. And then having people sit behind and that would give them more room for their staff to have different setups to give them more room to work.
Larger workspaces.
Which makes sense. And as soon as we get the layout of that, then we can have a, a carpenter come in and say, this is how, you know, what it will cost to actually make those, those, the counter for you. And I know that, yes, specifically they wanted some handicap things put in, because they don't have that right now.
And they also wanted two map drawers, which I suggested that I put them in connection with Todd Peets, because we had all the map drawers over there at Regional Planning Office, and they are going to take them.
Yeah, he has an empty to be at. We're waiting for him to do that, and then they're going to come down here.
He keeps announcing to, to the townships and stuff, hey, we got your old maps. If you want them, please come get them. But not too many of them.
So that, that was a good workaround that they, we were able to use some of those things. But what, what else is on that list, I think is minimal, but like I said, I will go through that, yeah.
That'd be really helpful. And then this, how, how will this come back to us?
These were strict, those, these will strictly be purchase orders.
Okay.
Yeah, going out. There's nothing here under the, that needs to be there. We've take, we've gotten quotes from different vendors. And I just want you, I, because of the, because it came back from them, I wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with going forward.
That's sure.
And then bring it to your attention that we're doing it too.
The other, the only other key thing that, that they were requesting was the key card entry into the.
That, yeah.
Yeah.
Which brings me to number eight.
Okay. So, let's see here. I will make a motion to go an executive session for G six details relative to security arrangements and. I will make a motion to go into executive session for G six details relative to security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or public office. Second.
You'll call in?
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.